She's on Kevvy. Mine's on Kevvy. Karen's talking to Joe.
Those are the jump pieces.
I think, I think.
Usually we'll have one on.
Yeah, he's coming up to me.
Let's take our places so we can continue the meeting.
Brenda. Brenda. Liquor. Liquor.
Okay, the meeting will come to order. We have completed the non-action items. We're ready to start on the non-action items. Discussion on the Evel Knievel Museum, if the clerk would read.
Is discussion regarding consideration of transient guest tax development agreement submitted by Evel Knievel Museum Incorporated.
Mr. City Manager, if you would introduce that, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd ask Ms. Robertson to just give a very brief overview of where we stand in the process. And I know Mr. Patterson is also here to speak. Yes.
Thank you, City Manager and Mayor. As you know, this will be our first development agreement that we are going to be considering with regard to the TGT funding. You all got a first round last week, I believe, and since that time, there have been just a few amendments, and most of those are because you all should have received Exhibit A, which is a packet that contains all kinds of wonderful information that the Evel Knievel Museum, Inc. has provided. It's got performance metrics, an operating plan, information from their lender, lots of valuable information that actually drove us to the point of revising the agreement somewhat so that it incorporated all of these things into it, and they become part of, and parcel of this agreement. If you all have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. In lines 51 and 52 on page three of the document is where we replaced Exhibit A as being the funding application, which is what they submitted originally to the TGT Committee. We replaced that with project documents, which includes all of these documents that I just referenced, which are very thorough and will be very valuable to have attached to this document. So that's in 51 and 52. And also in lines 77 through 80 of the agreement, we had initially had in place a six-month report that we were requiring to be provided. We changed that to make the reports quarterly because in talking with the Finance Director, that's what occurs right now with Visit Topeka, Inc. They provide quarterly reports before monies are released. We get the quarterly reports to know where things stand. So we made that change as well, and I've talked with Mr. Patterson, and he is in agreement with that change. So if you have any specific questions about the agreement, I would be happy to try to answer those, or Mr. Patterson's here as well.
Okay, first, are there any questions for the City Attorney on the agreement? And as we said, Exhibit A is actually, is a part of the agreement.
Correct.
Which gives the specifics, and particularly, I believe the financial, the budget is excellent. It shows they're very far along and have it together. All right, seeing no questions, I wouldn't, if, Mr. Patterson, would you like to step forth briefly, and if you want to comment, or if any of the council members have questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just want to let you know, we've looked at the revised agreement, and we agree with everything that's in there. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on this project. We really do, and we really feel like this is going to be a perfect example of a public-private partnership that's going to be a great thing for our community. Thank you.
Are there questions for Mr. Patterson, or Councilwoman Ortiz?
Mr. Patterson, I drove by there yesterday. Is the museum going to be that whole expansion area?
Most of it.
Most of it?
Yes.
What else will you have up there?
We're going to expand our showroom as well.
Okay. I was like, ooh, that's going to be big.
It is going to be big, even with the expansion of the showroom. That's what I thought, too, when I was standing in there. It's going to be big, yeah. But it's going to be great.
Are you going to extend any of the parking, or?
Yeah, we have a plan for some more parking there, and we also have talked with the Expo Center. We really hope we have a parking problem, and if we do...
You hope for a parking problem?
Yeah, we really do. We hope for a parking problem, because the way we're going to solve it is, we're going to work with the Expo Center, and they have parked over there, and we're going to run shuttle buses.
Maybe we could build us a little bridge over the little creek, and then just...
That's a whole nother discussion.
Okay.
We'd love to do that.
We have somebody called the Corv Engineers.
Yeah, there's some issues there.
There has to be a big bridge there.
Just a footbridge.
Okay, Councilman Shum.
Thank you. Actually, a question for Elise, if we could. Line 225 references, I'm sorry, line 224 and 225 reference the allocated funds possibly being reduced to correspond to lower-than-expected transient guest tax revenues and require annual appropriation. Just wanted to clarify if we're considering if the taxes are down in a year, if we're going to come back and try to restore the amount in a following year, with that language.
I believe that's correct.
Is that, I think, financial, Mr. Gerber, do you want to speak to that?
Councilman Shum, Mr. Mayor, thank you. That's correct. We would try to make that, provided the TGT Committee would provide it, or do it that way in the next year.
We've had that, that has occurred in the past when... Do you have any other questions for Mr. Patterson? Mr. Jensen.
Thank you. I would just make a comment. It looks like it's going to be a fantastic venue, and I can't wait to see it, and I appreciate you doing that in our community. This is going to be a wonderful gym, and I think we should all get out and take a look at it once it gets opened. Thank you.
And I also want to acknowledge the fine work you've done here with this, with the agreement, putting this material together. I know that's, it is a task. We ask for a lot, but you've done an excellent job of putting it together, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I wanted to echo that, if I could. I think that I'm not only really excited about your project, but I appreciate that you were, you've got the full set of the one through five items that we had in our resolution. They're so easy to follow, and correspondingly, they're so exciting in terms of what you've put into it and what we can see now, and I just wanted to congratulate you and thank you for your own project, as well as helping us set the bar for how to roll through the rest of these, and I appreciate the City Attorney's work. I like, I think the contract is improved, and I'm glad it's satisfactory with you.
Yes, and it's been, for us, it's been a real pleasure to work with the, with the city on this.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And this will be, yeah, this will be on the agenda then, next week, for, for your approval. Thank you. We'll go, completes Item A, we'll go to Item B. Clerk would read.
Is discussion relating to an update on the Southwest Woodbury South Court Drainage Project.
Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have Mr. Peake come forward, but just to roll this out, I want to have Doug make a couple of opening comments.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, governing body, thank you. What you have before you tonight, and Jason will go into some detail on this, is the Southwest Woodbury Court Drainage Project. This was a CIP project from several years ago, and that was approved by council. As we started getting into this project and working through the engineering associated with the project, it became pretty apparent that, a couple of things became pretty apparent. First off, the money allocated for the project probably would not be able to be adequate for what we needed, and consequently, the engineering solution that we were going to be able to come up with would not be adequate for those property owners and that particular area. This allowed staff to develop an alternate plan, which was to begin to visit with the property owners in that area and discuss the potential of buying out those properties to have a more effective project. Jason's going to put up a map for you so that you can walk through, he's going to, and walk you through where the project's located and some additional details behind that. So, Mayor, with your permission, I'll turn it over to him.
City Manager.
Yeah, thank you. So I, and I wanted Doug to have that conversation here, because I think it's very important. I think it ties in to other conversations that we had, that sometimes in the process, there are decisions made based on certain assumptions. As we go forward, as we get closer to it, sometimes we see things that are different, and prior to making any sort of change, either in the plan or in the budget, I want to come back to you, and in this case, I think it really indicates that staff is looking for better solutions that are truly effective, and in this case, is going to reduce the overall cost of this project and come up with a better alternative solution that wasn't considered previously.
And I don't know the year, but it, I recall when we approved this, because it's sort of an unusual situation.
What's the location?
This is just north of Gage Park.
Yeah, yeah.
One block right across from Gage Park. Oh, north of Sixth, okay. Mr. Peake.
Sure. Mayor and council, glad to be here and talk about this project. First, just so, I have a kind of photo here to understand what we're dealing with. There's a flooding problem that primarily impacted three homes, and this is a photo looking from one of those homes north along a creek channel. I kind of want to highlight the ponding area you see in the upper left-hand part of the photograph. That's the actual road cul-de-sac, and you can see how this creek overflows in their driveways. The map that we have here, we're talking about three properties, 4100, 4101, and 4109. There is a creek system that runs in the frontage of these properties that was there prior to development, and like that photo showed, even in a minimal rainstorm, that creek leaves its banks and floods these properties. Based on the history I have of the project, it started back in 2010, is when the original discussion on this project started, and I think some of the key highlights was in 2013. There was a budget revision to this project, looking at the engineering cost, basically to contain this channel and handle the flood events was kind of the, what we call the preliminary recommendation, was that's what we thought would be the solution out there. So that's where it started in 2013. As the engineering developed, looking at that, this is a stream that requires Corv Engineers coordination. So it went from what's called a general permit to an individual permit, which required a lot more significant coordination with the Corps for the impact to a riparian corridor. And so these things began to add up on the construction cost, and then even with the modeling that was done of containing the water within a concrete box structure, this would not address all flooding events out there. So staff basically went back to the table and said, you know, we're, we're looking at spending, you know, almost 800, and I think the original budget was $866,000 authorized. We're exceeding that with the engineering design of this project. Is there another way? And I think, you know, as engineers being one, sometimes we're focused on solving the problem, which is flooding, so how do we contain the flooding? But then the conversation came out, well, maybe the problem is removing those structures so that they're not impacted by flooding. Staff went to the three property owners to make sure that this was a voluntary arms-length transaction. Would you be willing for the city to purchase your properties? All three property owners are in agreement on that, and so that's really where we are. So you're looking at basically a total acquisition cost of roughly $586,000 to solve this problem versus, say, the engineering design approach, which was in excess of $900,000 to construct and not address the problem with all the events. So that's where we are tonight, as far as a project update and, you know, what we have scheduled for. Your next meeting is actually approval of the real estate agreements with those three property owners, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So the, that, the 486,000 plus 100,000, that, that's the total project of the purchase of the property and to put in the appropriate drainage?
So that's, what that cost represents is, this is what, in floodplain management terms, is called a mitigation project. We are basically acquiring those residential properties, and then we would demolish and remove those homes and let that restore to a naturalized area. So that's all that cost covered. There's no improvements to the drainage channel included with that cost.
And the other was so much more expensive, because we were doing it around the house, you know, leaving the houses there, but trying to go around and...
Trying to work around it, contain the flood. I mean, if you can think about it, we're basically, would just be addressing a segment of that stream, so there's still the upstream and downstream into that segment, so you're trying to confine it within a limited section.
All right. Councilman Harmon.
Thank, thank you, Your Honor. This has been, this is in my council district, and I've been to that area during, the mayor's not, he said, yes, he has been to, I've been to that area during a rain event. It looks like a river flowing through there. What's miraculous is no one's been killed or injured, and that the property owners have been extremely patient while having flooding several times, times a year. Frankly, I don't think we should ever put houses in that area.
Yeah.
Because the, the water issue is, really cannot be, cannot be handled. So I think this is a great, great idea, and I commend you and your staff for kind of thinking outside the box, and instead of trying to mitigate it, just trying to do what should have been done in the first place, is not, not have houses there. I do want to ask a follow-up.
Sure.
One of the projects we've been looking at is 10th, well, 10th Street and Sixth Street Gage going west of Fairlawn, which would include installation of storm sewers. Would that, would that help, not necessarily with this project, but would that help mitigate flooding along Sixth on either side if we have storm sewers put in?
So, Councilman Harmon, I'm not familiar with the flooding issues throughout this neighborhood. I wouldn't be able to respond to that. What I would say is with our, our street projects, we are addressing the drainage associated with those street projects, but I wouldn't be able to speak to how it ties to the larger drainage area.
Okay, we have, well, 10th Street's, they're starting, I think, Thursday, and putting in storm sewers along 10th, and then we're looking at Sixth Street. There is localized flooding north of 10th, because we don't have any storm sewers. So while, if Sixth Street is done with, with storm sewers, that will help, but it certainly will not eradicate or eliminate the flooding problem that we're having on, on Woodbury. So I think this is a great project, very much overdue, and again, I want to compliment staff for, for this, this solution. Thank you.
And, you know, and I assume that they will be when they redesign Sixth Street, which is in process. They'll be taking all this into consideration, because it is a bad situation, the way the, it's a low area, and there's water backs up a great deal very easily on it. Councilwoman Claire.
How long has this been going on, this flooding here?
Long as I know.
Yeah.
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 Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two quick questions. So once the houses are demolished, I assume this will go back to grass. Who is responsible for mowing that?
The city would be the owner of the lot, so...
Would this be an opportunity to convert it to a park and give it to the county?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer to that.
I don't, well, I, it's...
My understanding is we're not equipped to mow large things anymore, so I'm wondering if maybe making this a park would eliminate that problem.
We do have drainage areas that we have to maintain. Would this be one of those? Mr. Gerber.
Councilman Jensen and Mr. Mayor, I would say we, we are in fact equipped to mow those areas, whether it's our WPC crews that mow huge swaths of land, or our, working with our inmate crews. We are equipped for that, but we would want to get back to you, I think, but initially we would say that the best and highest use of this land may be just letting it go back to native grass so that the stream can resume its natural flow. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was part of my question, too, and I would agree with Richard. I don't think we should build anything else on there. I wish we had the pictures that, you remember the pictures that they brought, the property owners brought up? It was terrible. It was terrible, and it was all the way to the, the house, and some of them, it went in the house. So it was a step outside, and there's a lake. I mean, Richard's correct. It's surprisingly, nobody's been hurt.
Other discussion, questions, comments? Councilwoman Hiller.
A question, and maybe you said, and I missed it. So looking at this picture, we have this street, and then a big cul-de-sac and driveways and the houses. What, what happens to the cul-de-sac, the street? Is everything coming out?
The, the street would not be coming out. I mean, the street would still, that cul-de-sac area would still be flooded, but the houses that are impacted, 4100, 4101, and 4109, would be removed, so having to drive through that flooded area to get to those properties would no longer be an issue.
I understand that. I was just trying to imagine, we have some experience with neglected streets aging, that, you know, what, what would happen to that, make a pretty good basketball court, I guess, but just in time, if it floods and recedes and floods and nobody cleans it or anything, it's going to be kind of a mess, isn't it?
I think what he's saying is, with the houses gone, there will be a better flow, and so it shouldn't back up on the street anymore, or much less. Correct? Mr. Gerber.
If I may, I, I think there will still be some localized issues, but they should be less because of the rooftops disappearing and the rainwater able to dissipate better. Obviously, we would still need to provide access to some houses in that area, particularly where Jason has the mouse, the arrow pointing. And so we can't abandon that street. We'll just have to make sure we keep an eye on it and make sure that proper maintenance is performed.
Okay. Are there other questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. We'll then proceed to Item C, discussion on special units. Clerk would read.
Discussion, discussion for the purpose of providing an update on the special structures unit.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Richard Faulkner to step forward. Already is. And specifically during last year's budget process, we created a, you approved within the budget, a special structures unit, which addressed vacant and abandoned, abandoned structures in the, in the community, and so without any further delay.
All right.
Mayor, council, I'd like to share with you the implementation strategy and update on the special structures unit. The special structures unit was funded in the 2016 budget. We were provided with two full-time employees. We also increased the budget for the demolitions from 100,000 to 400,000 dollars. One of the tasks that we had to do was to identify the vacant structures in our community. Before I go any further, I want to talk about the difference between a vacant structure and abandoned structure. A vacant structure is just a structure that's not occupied, it has utilities, and the taxes are current. Now, abandoned structure is a structure that's not occupied, has no utilities, and it has two years' back taxes. So that's an abandoned structure. So we had to go through and identify all the vacant structures first, so we could make a determination on which ones were abandoned. This map just shows the vacant structures. I had the property maintenance inspectors go out and drive their area and just identify structures that were vacant, and that's all this map shows. It just shows the vacant structures. After we identified the vacant structures, we had to determine, we had to categorize the structures. Demolition, that's basically speaks for itself. We identified structures that needed to be demolished. Housing cases, these are structures that may have been vacant, but had some housing issues, but not to the level where they needed to be demolished. Rehabilitation, we had some structures that were vacant, and the owners were actually, and they had some housing issues, but the owners were working to rehabilitate them. The verified is the structures that we identified just were vacant. They didn't have any housing issues, they didn't need to be demolished, so we just, they're, they're just verified. Tax sale, we partnered with Shawnee County. They needed to, before they could take a property and put it on a tax sale, they had to verify that it was actually an unoccupied structure, it had to actually be abandoned. There was no one living there, the taxes hadn't been paid on it, and no utilities. So we sent a lot of houses over to, not a lot of houses, but we'll get to the numbers, we sent houses over to Shawnee County so they could put them on the tax record so they could be sold. So here's the update. We're nearly halfway through the process of those 770 houses. We sent over 127 cases to Shawnee County. We verified 99 houses, five of them needed to be rehabbed, and we have 52 housing cases. The demolition list, I want to clarify that, too, that all those houses, we have 44 houses on the demolition list. That doesn't mean all 44 of those houses will demolish, be demolished. Some of them, we are monitoring, they had fire damage, and we're watching them. Some of them are going through the hearing process. The owners may come back, and they may decide to rehab them and fix them, and then some of them, actually, we have orders on to go ahead and demolish. So that list doesn't just exemplify houses that will be demolished.
Excuse me, can I go back to that for just a second? Because I, I think this is very important, and just restating what you said, so we've sent 127 properties over to the county...
Correct.
Where they meet the whatever criteria to go on a tax sale.
Correct.
All right. And the verified, again, state what that is.
That's just, they're just vacant homes.
Okay. They're not abandoned?
No, they're not, yeah, they're not abandoned. They're just vacant.
Okay. And then the housing case?
Housing cases is they had a property maintenance issue. Gutters, roof, painting, so they had some, some type of property maintenance issue.
But these are all vacant?
Yes.
Everything on this page is vacant?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and then the demolition list is, as you stated?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
So last year at this time, I just wanted to show that by taking, hiring the two new inspectors and focusing on this, this issue, that we're making a big stride. Last year at this same time that you saw, they see there, we had 14 houses on the demolition list. Now, this year at that same time, we have 42. So we are starting to see an increase of the houses that we need to take care of in our community.
And these are residences?
Yes.
These are all residents, single residences?
We have, we have one on there that is a commercial building, but we are focusing on residential structures, but we will do commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Does that include apartments?
No, no apartments.
No apartments.
They're all single?
These are all single family and one commercial building. No apartment buildings.
And I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it's, it's helpful that we, we're learning something here, and I think it's important material. Did you have a question? Yeah, go ahead.
What he's saying, while you can remember it, let us ask it.
Yeah, right, before we forget.
Does this include duplexes? It's just housing?
It, it would include a duplex if a duplex, it includes residential structures. We just haven't included any apartment buildings at this time.
So apartment building is not a residential structure, then?
Yes.
It is, but we're not including it.
We haven't included any at this time.
Gotcha.
Or more, more single family?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Go ahead. Thanks.
So when we got the funding, we knew we had limited resources, so we wanted to come up with a stra- come up with a strategy when we implemented the, uh, special structures unit. So, we partnered with the police department, the fire department, and public works, and we got together and we talked and tried to come up with a strategy. And out of that discussion, we developed a two-pronged approach, uh, to use the special structures unit. Uh, we developed a neighborhood approach where we would, uh, go into a particular neighborhood and look at the vacant structures in that area and address those. And then we also came up with a targeted structures approach, which is an approach where we're looking at all the vacant structures in our community and seeing which ones needed to be, uh, taken care of. So, we had the two-pronged approach. Uh, for the neighborhoods, we had to decide which neighborhoods we would start in. So, we established a list of criteria that we would use, uh, to go into the neighborhoods. Uh, we looked at neighborhoods, if it had a sort, it would get so many points. If it, uh, had a resident involvement, if it had an NA or NIA, uh, we took that into consideration. We also took into consideration if there were other, any city initiatives in that area. Uh, we also wanted to make sure that with us going into that area, we would complement the things that were going on in that area. Uh, and we also took a look at the community health map, uh, to take a look at those areas that were distressed and could use some help. So, those were the criterion. The neighborhoods that got, met most of these criteria, that's where we started. Now, for the targeted structures, uh, a lot of times, uh, these vacant structures, we have our citizens walking by them, and having them walk by these structures that are vacant isn't always the safest thing for them. So, we wanted to take a look at the structures that were by schools, by parks, and by community centers. And so, what we did, we came up with a point system. If a structure was by a school, we got a point. And if it's by a community center, it got a point. And if it was by a, uh, park, it got a point. So, the structures that had ones, twos, and threes, we addressed them. So, I'll show you what we did. Uh, so, the red, as you can see, are the structures that had three points. That means that structure was by a school, was by a park, and is by a community center. And that structure, those are the structures we wanted to start with, and then we're going to work down the list, the twos, the ones, and then the ones that are just, uh, abandoned and blighted. This map shows, uh, the, what we just talked about. The red areas are the communities, uh, that we're going to start in. We actually started in North Topeka East, and then the dots you see on there are the structures throughout the community. Uh, the red dots are the ones that, that had, were by three of the, uh, facilities that, that our citizens walked by, and the yellow, uh, two, and so forth, and green is one. So, this is an example of the first community that we, uh, looked at. This is North Topeka East. Uh, we went in and had fifty-four, uh, properties that were vacant. Twenty-four, once again, were just verified. They were just vacant. There was nothing, they were just vacant. Uh, sixteen of them, we opened housing cases. There were some property maintenance issues on them, so we opened property maintenance cases on them. Uh, seven of them, uh, we put on our, our unsafe structures list, so we've been contacting the owners and getting ready to go through the process to either have them repaired or demolished. Uh, two homes, uh, the tenants were actually, uh, rehabbing them, and we sent five homes, uh, to the county for a tax sale.
And those going to a tax sale, then they're in better shape?
Correct.
In the sense they're not candidate for demolition, but they meet the criteria, so that would be one way of getting them improved?
Correct. We, we try not to send any houses over to the county that are in need of demolition. Uh, we, we try and keep them here, so we would actually work on those. But the ones that are in some, uh, reasonable condition, we'll send it over to the county.
And they have not had, paid their back taxes?
Correct. Those are, those are abandoned, they're abandoned structures. They haven't paid their back taxes, and there's no water in it.
Okay. Councilman Clear?
So, on this proximity to vulnerable locations, there's like ten places that are really bad? Because it's bad?
Correct. It was by three of them. It's by a school, a park, and, uh, community center.
So, do you think this year, those ten will be demolished? How many do you think you'll do this year?
Yeah, we should, we should, I don't, we should do those ten at least. I know we've already identified them, and we've started contacting the property owners. So, either they'll be demolished or they'll be repaired.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, also, the, why, the reason why we looked at the vacant structures, this is a good example. We had a property at, uh, forty-three, four, four, three, three Southeast Pine Crest. It started out as a weed case. You know, we looked at it, it had a weed case. Then it went from the weed case, uh, to unsafe structure, and eventually, we wound up having to demolish it. And this is just, uh, a short video that shows the structure being taken.
It's in my district. Three of us, it's in our district.
Yeah.
Our, our next step, we're going to continue to, uh, monitor, uh, vacant structures in our community, uh, to see the ones that need, uh, some attention, uh, the ones that need to be sold or taken down. Uh, we foresee that, uh, access to the funding for taking down forty-four houses a year, if we could do that for the next four to five years, we should have a handle on the vacant and abandoned structures in our community, and we can just, probably just maintain it at that point. But we have some catching up to do. Uh, there was a, uh, abandoned house bill, uh, that was in the legislature that, uh, the mayor was a big part of getting through. Uh, unfortunately, uh, the governor vetoed that bill. That bill would have allowed us to, uh, take advantage, uh, of these homes and get them rehabbed before they got to the point where they're needed to be demolished. Unfortunately, it didn't pass, so we are going to be trying to look at other alternatives to still get a hold of these structures before they need to be demolished. Thank you.
And if I could comment, I think you said that very well. Uh, this, this bill, the, it would have provided another tool that cities could use and primarily make it possible for the houses to be saved and rehabbed before we have to demolish them through, uh, nonprofit organizations. And, uh, that was stated that we were, we were misusing government authority over property and individual rights, and, um, we feel that very appropriately, it was very strongly protected in the bill, that the property rights of individuals had to go before the council, had to go before a district judge, before any action could be taken. So, I, I think it is unfortunate, um, for our managing the, the, these issues in the city. Uh, now, excellent report, I think, and I, I'm sorry in, interrupting you, but I think this is
No, that's fine.
Good information that I feel we're not as familiar with, and many of us, we, we've had, worked in these areas for a number of years, which is very helpful to see what's happening. And I think the demolition is important, but also, you're doing so much more to try to get houses upgraded before we have to demolish them.
Yes.
And that's really important, and will save us money in the long run. Okay, questions, comments, council members? Discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah. Councilwoman Ortiz?
What do we do when there's people that are living in them and they refuse to leave, but they, we know that they need to be demolished? How do we handle that?
To have it, we've only had one case, or two cases that I'm aware of, where we went to this, this structure, and there were some vagrants that were living there. Typically, we go up, and if they're there and they don't want to leave, we'll call the police. Uh, we'll do what we have to do, and typically, they'll move back in. Uh, but if we're going to take it down, we always check before we, uh, take any action to demolish the structure. So, they, they just have to move on.
Because I have seen so many people in my district that were, you know, they'll leave, but they're, they're, you're right, they come back, you know, to stay at night, you know? They'll let you call the police on them a million times or whatever. I mean, it's hard to get them out of their homes.
We actually have, I can't think of a, the, the, uh, gentleman in our community who works with trying to get those individuals some housing. Uh, I can't think of his name right now, but we have, he's very proactive at doing that. Yes. Justin?
Hosman.
Hosman, yes.
Oh, yeah.
He works with those individuals and trying to find housing for them.
Other, other questions? Comments? Discussion? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is very helpful, very, very meaningful for us to hear. Uh, next, we have one more discussion item of the, on the CIP. Clerk?
Dea's discussion of the proposed 2017-2021 capital improvement plan and the 2017-2019 capital improvement budget.
Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will turn this over to Mr. Gerber. Mr. Gerber?
Mr. Mayor, governing body, thank you again. Um, tonight, we will continue our discussion on the exciting projects contained in the three-hundred-million-dollar CIP for the upcoming five years, CIP and CIB. Um, as you recall, we've discussed this at several council meetings previously, the March eighth meeting, the March fifteenth meeting. Uh, we're continuing our discussion tonight. We've tried a couple new processes this year. We had a CIP open house, which we've visited with you about, which in our estimation was wildly successful. We had forty or fifty folks there. We had a lot of staff that are talking about a number of projects and had a good conversation with most of those folks and, and, uh, talked about CIP projects and other concerns on their minds, so it was a very successful evening. We had a CIP bus tour, um, a couple Saturdays, Saturdays ago. A number of staff and a number of city council gave up their Saturday morning of sleeping in and drinking coffee, uh, to ride the bus around and, and look at a number of projects, and also felt like that was a very fruitful endeavor. In terms of steps moving forward, we would anticipate this discussion tonight. Um, in a second, I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Peak to come up and walk through a, a map that we've prepared to, for you, that you have in your packet, and we'll pull up on the screen, which delineates proposed projects versus, uh, completed projects for a number of years. Uh, we hope to answer any questions that you may have tonight, lingering questions or comments, and then would anticipate putting this on the agenda for council action next week.
All right.
So, with, with your permission, Mr. Mayor.
Are there other questions, Mr. Gerber? We'll proceed. Thank you.
I'd like to ask Mr. Peak to come forward.
Good evening again. The map that we put together was in response to some of the dialogue we had with, uh, mayor and council about, uh, street projects in particular, what was originally proposed when the half-cent, uh, tax, city half-cent tax was proposed. What, what types of projects were we looking at doing? And then also talking about what we actually have done and plan to do for the remainder of the, the citywide, uh, half-cent, uh, sales tax. Uh, so this map that we have, basically, uh, to walk you through kind of the color coding, the, the purple lines on the map are the list of streets that were included in, I think, to what was called the Yellow Book, the original, uh, proposal around the half-cent. Uh, the yellow lines and the yellow on top of the purple lines are actually all the street projects, uh, that we've done, and they also include, uh, funding from other sources, uh, not just the citywide half-cent. Uh, so I think, you know, as we had the conversation about what was proposed back with the original half-cent versus what we're doing, uh, some of the things to kind of highlight is, uh, you'll see that, um, you know, we have the, the twelve million dollars that's going to neighborhood streets, mill and overlay, and a lot of those areas that are highlighted on the map are, are the yellow. Those were not areas originally identified, uh, in that half-cent that have been, uh, added, uh, and it, it's covering a, a lot of streets. Um, I do want to, you know, put out there, though, that the, you know, what, what the total centerline miles of, of what we expect to complete with the, uh, the half-cent is around seventy centerline miles versus that original proposal of purple was around a hundred and twenty, uh, centerline miles. So, it's a, it's a little bit less, but I think there's a couple of things to highlight in that. A lot of the, the street projects have evolved from that original concept that we're going to be able to do a mill and overlay on all these streets throughout the city. We've gotten into a lot of what's called full-depth reconstruction, which is more expensive, but those are also projects that have been coordinated with utility projects. So, we're getting a longer life out of that investment, but it's definitely a more costly, uh, upfront cost to do that. Whereas you can see, you know, some of the mill and overlay projects that were done early on in the half-cent, uh, you know, mill and overlay is going to get you ten to twenty years if you're lucky, but we've got some of those, uh, that, you know, will, will have to be addressed again, and that's just the nature of a street cycle. They don't last forever. Uh, they require maintenance and upkeep. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the map, uh, or, or street projects.
I appreciate this map. I think it is very helpful, and it's, there's a lot of information here, uh, to look at and to, and to review and, and see where we are. Are there your questions, comments, discussion? We've been on this a number of times, and, um, maybe we're ready to move on, but, uh, is our opportunity before it comes before us, uh, to take action. And I know, I think, uh, another issue is, uh, you're working with the, um, I don't know all the correct technological terms, the dashboard and different things, where you'll be able to update regularly the status of the different projects, because sometimes that's been stated that you have to change, um, like we had on the Woodbury Court, uh, different projects because things change. Do you want to comment on that, Mr. Gerber?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd, I'd be glad to. Uh, yeah, I, excuse me, I failed to mention that, that this, uh, will be part of our open budget portal moving forward, and so it should be able to give you, uh, status updates on projects. Um, a couple of additional items, uh, that of course is always included in our quarterly reports. And then, moving forward, we're, um, we're going to do a much better job communicating with the council on a routine basis in terms of where things stand and what may or may not have changed, uh, particularly in regards to a quarterly public, public works and utility report, council meetings. So, all of those things should make what, what is now a good process even better.
You know, answer every question that any councilman has ever had, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Anything else? We don't want to delay. Councilwoman Hiller?
I'm the person that's had a lot of questions anyway along the way, and I just want to tell you all how much I appreciate, um, this map acknowledges where we are. It's sobering. That was the only point I had when I brought it up, and it, it is sobering what we need to do. And I appreciate your discussion about the projects tracking. I don't know what the best way is. A lot of these questions that I answered, that I asked and were answered the last round had to do with the fact that, you know, the mayor at the beginning of the process said, can we see last year's compared to this year's when we get a project budget to start with? And then when it rolls up, dropping off one year and adding another, and it, it's a different number, we can't tell what happened to that first year, and, and it's just very hard to track. I don't know the answer exactly on how to do it, and I know that it's a work in progress and that we do have a good system. I, I hope we can get there, because I think we'll all, it, it used to be that when we a, approve projects one at a time, if it was different from what had been in the budget, we all knew that when it went online. And with approving them, maybe even three years out, we miss that communication. So, I don't know if it has to be quarterly or how, but I appreciate the staff's response and, and look forward to us notching it just that one more level. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much for the presentation. That completes the discussion on that item. Completes the discussion items and on action items. Uh, yeah, I'm, yes, um, Mr. Ledbetter had, uh, signed up to speak on that item, but he told me he may leave early, and I don't see him, so I, I believe he has gone. Uh, so, we will now go to announcements, and first is the preliminary agenda of the next week's meeting, and we look forward to being a bit less intense.
We have two proclamations. We have one presentation on the arc spending. For the consent agenda, we will have a board appointment. agenda, we will have a board appointment to the building and fire appeals. We'll have two to the Board of Plumbing Examiners. We will have a resolution for a special event and noise exemption for the 2016 Eagle Cruise Night on May 14th. Action items include a resolution and ordinance for general obligation bond series 2016A. We have an ordinance for full faith and credit tax increment refunding bond series 2016. We have three real estate agreements regarding southwest Woodbury. Be for Gallmeyer, Taylor, and Andrews. We have the transient guest tax development agreement for Evel Knievel Museum and expenditure ordinance. We have the CIP resolution and the corresponding revenue bonds for enterprise fund projects. Non-action items includes a discussion on annexation for West Indian Hills, number 12, and a discussion on planned unit development regulations and the inter-local agreement.
Thank you. Now the year announcements. Mr. City Manager.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was really excited about tonight's announcement because I was anticipating our, the response to our most recent call with Standard Empowers in terms of our bond rating, and we were very hopeful that we were going to get a bond upgrade to the AA+. We did not. We got a very strong affirmation of our AA rating, and we're still in a positive position with them. The anticipation is that it's going to come, and it's going to come soon. I was just hoping to be able to announce it tonight. So my announcement is, we're still the same.
But that's good.
But that's good, given where we came from, yes.
That's good news. All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few announcements, if you'll bear with me for a second. This week is, this Saturday is the flood of your curb. That's previously the makeover takeover. It's for everything east of Topeka Boulevard, which includes North Topeka. So any of those old items that you don't want, you can carry them to the curb, and they will be picked up. Unfortunately, you can't put any kids out there. It's also free landfill day and yard waste disposable, so you can collect that and take that, and that's from 8 to 12 and 1 to 4, and that's, that's free. And also, it's the tire collection. They'll accept four tires per household at the Firestone at 3701 South Topeka Boulevard. So I know that there's a lot of tires laying around out there, so if we can collect those and get those out there, that would be great. East Avondale has a great net reach program. I don't know if you've experienced that, but they're going to start something new with Westar. They're going to have the food pantry on Friday from 3 to 4. So that's another feeding site if you're running short on groceries for the month. And then last but not least, if you'll pass those that way, and you'll pass those that way, please, for everyone, they're having, Healthy Neighborhoods is having a baby shower, and it's for pregnant women. And they did this before, and it was awesome. It is this Saturday, April the 16th, and it starts at 10:30, and they're giving away a safe crib to the first 52 people that are in the door with wearable blankets, and they're giving away a lot of information regarding SIDS and whatnot. I did pass these to council members. They've teamed up with the metro, and on the bottom you will see that it says, this card will get you a free ride there, and I thought that was awesome. So I have a few more that I will pass out, but if you need some more, get ahold of me. I just think our net reach is just doing an awesome job on serving in that area, well-deserved area in my district that I'm very proud of.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Shum?
Thank you. We do have the East Side Anti-Crime Summit coming up, April 26th, and again, starts at 5:30 Highland Park High School Cafeteria, and appreciate anyone that can make it out to that. Let's see here, we do have free metro rides on April 22nd for Earth Day, so keep that in mind as well. Have the privilege of going on a windshield tour of District 4 with some folks from Go To Peak and the Chamber, Matt Pavarneck, Curtis Snead, and Scott Smathers. I know that they've got that, or are working on getting it scheduled with every other council member as well, so I do encourage you to take that opportunity. It's really a blessing to see them be that interested in the community and to take the initiative to go out and then explore it, and we get to be tour guides of our districts. I encourage you not to pass up that opportunity.
Deputy Mayor Dila Isra?
Thank you, Mayor Wolgas. Councilmember Shum, I'll let you know that I'm going to up the ante, and Mr. Pavarneck and I have talked about doing carpool karaoke while we're doing District 5.
Go for it.
No, but on a serious note, I just would like to excuse myself. Next meeting, I will be out in Florida. I depart this week and don't come back till the middle of next week, have training, and will not be able to attend the meeting. And in that same vein, the 26th of April is my daughter's 13th birthday. I'm going to be gone all week, and there's two very important meetings in the community that I will not be able to attend because I will be with my family. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Jensen?
Thank you. Just so everyone knows, my phone number is 785-422-0018. You can go to my website, brendanjensen.com, and there are five, six different ways you can get in touch with me. So for those of you who don't think I'm reachable, I maintain a private website with resources to contact me in addition to all the resources that are available on the city website. So there's no excuse not to be able to reach me for any reason whatsoever.
Can you repeat that for me? I'm writing a little slow here, and I need that.
The phone number is 785-422-0018, and the website is...
I'm going to call you to make sure that's it.
All right.
The trick is he has to call back.
That's it, that's it.
Oh, my. You're going to call me like 3 o'clock in the morning, aren't you?
I will, tonight, yes.
Lovely. Well, I'm on call all the time for my business anyway, so the person you really have to worry about is the lovely Dr. Amber.
That's all right. I know how to handle her.
Have a great week, everybody.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you. I want to thank everyone that worked with all of the proposals that we've had before us with the TGT Committee and the development that's going on. I was talking to my cardiologist last week about the, in my doctor's visit, I was saying that we're going to have an Asian garden in about, you know, two years, and we're going to have a public plaza with a spray park and a, you know, skating rink, and I was talking about all these things that we're going to have in Topeka. And, you know, the excitement is overwhelming, I think, all out there. So I really think what we're doing, you know, here at City Council is just great, because we're moving Topeka forward. I want to announce that we have the Blintza brunch this Sunday at Temple Best Shalom. It's from 9 to 1:30. It's $12 tickets at the door, all you can eat. We have a lot of church-going people that come after church, and they have blintzes, and we just have a lot of different things. We have Jewish dancing, and we have a silent auction, and we have a lot of food for sale. So be sure that you make it out of that. My gem for this week is our businesses in Topeka, those that make up our chamber and those that do not, and we have some really great businesses. And we went, I have to show you, I've been putting this on the side of my chair. I went, and they're a member of the Chamber, went and got this. I'm turning 65 next month, so I went to a seminar on Social Security, and Nita Jeffries gave me this, and I put my little Jayhawk on it, and so the gem of this week is the businesses here in Topeka.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you. To our district, we have a Neighborhood Association meeting for Meadowcrest, which is essentially 21st to 29th Engage to Farallon, that big area. It is on April 26th at 7:00 PM, and it's at the Crestview United Methodist Church. I'd also like to extend again another invitation to you to come to see Franklin Graham on April 28th at the Capitol, and it's at noon. Also, does everybody know where the Helping Hands Humane Society is? Okay? Turn around and look the other way. There is 21st and Bell Shops there, and it is quite a little gym in its own, completely women-owned. So if you guys want to come by and...
Yes.
Yep?
Yes, right.
Yep, and give them some business. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harmon. Councilwoman Hiller?
On last pitch for the District 1 Anti-Crime Summit follow-up, the first follow-up, it is Saturday morning, this Saturday, the 16th, from 9:30 to noon at the Law Enforcement Center. Everyone has been great putting that together, and just because all those other things are going on on the 16th, it looks to me like people can take their stuff in early, before 9:00, or in the afternoon, and so everybody can still make it. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Claire?
We just had the second Noto Planning Meeting last week. Very exciting stuff happening there.
That's, that's, oh, okay. Two quick announcements. First, there will be the opening ceremonies for the Bartlett and West Pocket Park is next Monday, 10:30 AM, and that's the one just at 9th and Kansas, where you see the great big pencil, and it's particularly significant at night. The lighting is fantastic. So drive by there on your way home. It's already lit, but they'll be doing some other things with it. And the other announcement is, Visit Topeka is having a survey on their website pertaining to what you would like to see in the downtown plaza. I know they would like to have a lot of people respond to that. It's a very easy, four-minute survey if you would like to take that. That completes our announcements. We now have our public comment. First is Mr. Tuckness.
Mr. Mayor, I did forget one announcement.
I'm sorry. We're going to, we have another one to run.
It's just a real short one. I wanted to say you did a remarkable job at the State of the City address, and you made us very, very proud. And it was different, it was exciting, and I just wanted to say thank you for representing us.
Thank you. I appreciate that. First person, Mr. Harkness. Go ahead, please proceed.
Am I ready to go?
I'm sorry. I mispronounced, Mr. Tuckness. I mispronounced your name.
Well, if I got it right, I signed up to speak on the Fire Chief of Arizona, and I wanted to kind of speak before you voted, so I guess I was put in the public comments. So perhaps I should thank whoever it was that made it possible to not exercise my Fifth Amendment right to be heard as a constituent on my opinion. But moving on, I'd like to say a few things. It's my opinion that the city manager has had some stuff put in place for guidance that we've talked about for quite a while, and I think really, as a person on the street, the common person on the street ruled that he works for the council, not the other way around. I was thinking about a fiduciary duty. Now, the governor of Illinois is still in federal prison because he violated his fiduciary duty and decided to neglect the law and do as he pleased. And you people on the council, you look like you're making a good faith effort or have a fiduciary duty to supervise down deeper into the operations of the city manager. And I noticed that Barry Grisham, the U.S. Attorney's, leaving town, so there could be a new chief in there. Maybe there's a number of city councilmen I've read about over the years in various states that are presently serving time because they allowed themselves to be led down the primrose path. But I want to create a common ground here on something I talked against as a taxpayer, was the city manager's track record on the Heartland Park. And my information is not as good as it could be. I think if there was a lady by the name of Van Dyke or something like that, it might have been better, but for some reason she mysteriously changed employment.
Mr. Tuckness, please make your comments to the council and do not make personal references to individuals.
She's not on the council.
I know, but that's still appropriate decorum that we have here.
Are we stopped the clock?
We will give you additional time.
All right, thank you. Okay, I was reading in the Tuesday, April 5th, 2016 Capital Journal, so my, I don't have certified documents or certified copies under penalty of perjury of what's going on, but owner wants evaluation closer to 2.5 million purchase price for his taxes. And the city manager, Colson, told us it had been appraised at 15 million, and, you know, people were chomping at the bit. I'll read a little bit to you. "Faced with hundreds of thousands of dollars of repairs to the park, and the park opened in 1989, the racetrack deteriorated rapidly." Now, this pre-article is, everybody can look at it, so I don't have to go into a lot of stuff. Okay, "The county must realize the market for this property has been poor," according to Payne. And then we work over here on page three, a few things that were overlooked or fraudulently concealed from us by the administration. It says, "Between the repairs and general operating costs, Payne estimated that they need to net $27,000 a month," or $33,000, $330,000 a year, "and taxes are $340,000." And then the appraisal was done, it only came in at 8 million. "We just dropped in six months from 15 to 8. That's a pretty good drop right there, about that pie in the sky." And then Steve Brom told the Capital Journal, and Marsh Payne said, "He doesn't want a tax exemption." I don't know who in the world would go for that. I mean, I thought everybody wanted tax exemptions. This must be a special person that he wants to pay taxes. And the business said that they wanted their stuff lowered down to the actual sales price in there, which the 2.5 million, all right. Then they go on to say that the road course marked with cracks needs to be repaired, and the buses will have to be replaced, dumped trash, hundreds of disregarded barrels, thousands of used tires, scrap metal, concrete, and debris over a 30-acre area. It would seem the city manager would have a fiduciary duty to go out and actually look at this property before he tries to pile it on top of the taxpayer that has to pay. Now, I've sued the County of Crazor for fraud.
Okay. That's your completion of your time. Would you like to conclude your comments?
All right. That was his track record there. Now we have this chief...
No, I'm sorry. That's, that's the completion of your time.
Okay. And I didn't get the extra time when we took out for the other one.
No, you were at it. That was provided. Okay, thank you very much.
You have a great day.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Minister Ray Robinson. Good evening.
My name is Ray Robinson. I'm a member of El Shaddai Ministries, Community Church, and a member of Topeka Jump. I'm speaking before you today because I am angry that over 7,000 low-income families in Topeka, Kansas are cost burdened by their rent and live in unsafe conditions. There are not enough safe, affordable housing options for low-income families, and I believe that you all should be angry about this. An account comes to mind that's very personal for me. It was a landlord that had a rental property that my son, his wife, and my three grandchildren were renting. Every time it rained, it flooded the living room and the kitchen area. This eventually became so bad that the carpeting molded. Due to the constant pleas for my son to address these issues to this landlord, well, he said he would come and put new carpeting in. He came and removed the old carpeting. He waited a few days and brought back the same carpeting and tried to install that. My son then had to move for the safety of his children and his wife. After doing so, he was labeled by the landlord and had to settle for another substandard rental property, which had mold in the bathroom, in the tiles. So he moved from one situation to another situation, started the whole process over again, pleading for this landlord also to take action. Jump allows me to positively engage in uplifting this city I live in. Our processes have shown to be a great tool in helping our city leaders find and fight for solutions to systemic problems affecting our city. It is not our will, nor will it ever be, our intention to slander or belittle the efforts already being endeavored by many in this city to address the issue of safe and affordable housing, but to add to the efforts to make this capital city of Kansas a model of success for the Midwest. We at Jump represent 20 united yet diverse churches covering all the districts that this council represents. We are multi-ethnic, multi-denominational. We are Baptist, Methodist, Presbyterian, Mennonite, and Catholic, just to name a few. We are not protesters or activists. We are justice seekers, according to God's word. We are justice seekers, according to God's Word. We have a shortage of safe and affordable housing options in Topeka. I would consider this a crisis that perpetuates property... poverty, excuse me, and injustice. And I am empowered to be a part of Topeka Jump, who not only brings light to community problems that need to be addressed, but also comes up with potential solutions. We have done the research to know that there is a way for our community to increase its capacity to meet our housing needs. Speaker Kansas should establish a trust fund to receive ongoing dedicated sources of public and private funding to support the preservation and production of affordable housing that results in more opportunities for families and individuals to access decent and affordable housing. On April 26th, we are bringing together our congregations and stakeholders who relate to the housing needs in Topeka, including the city council and staff. It is our hope that as a community, we take a simple step forward by putting together a task force, both city staff and community members, that can research and design an affordable housing trust fund with a dedicated revenue source that can meet our housing needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Councilman Ortiz?
I didn't announce this, but I do want to announce this to Mr. Ray Robinson on the 26th. Well, everything's happening on April 26th, isn't it? At 9:30, the rights and responsibilities of the landlord and the tenants. You might want to make a note of that, and it's going to be at the Holiday Building, I believe. Is that right, Sasha? It's going to be a full day of education, of educating not only... it's educating us on what the landlords can and cannot do, and also tenants as our rights. So, and I appreciate your endeavor. I would suggest that members of the Jump group go so you can educate yourself.
We have no problem doing that. In fact, we've already met with many other landlords and landlord associations.
But I'm saying legally, so you can educate your... So, you know, because a lot of times, people stay in places... I'm not saying your son did this, because they don't know their legal rights, and the landlords will tell them anything. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's a very good resource since you guys are researching it. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If you have any questions, call me, okay?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
All right.
Third is Pam Ensley.
My name is Pam Ensley, and I'm a member of First Baptist Church. And what a night to come and talk to you, and you've declared Fair Housing Month. So, it's very apropos. No, it's serendipitous. I want to start out and tell you why I am a member of Jump. Our church had talked many, many times about branching out into the community and finding ways that we can go to the community and not just expect the community to come to our church, and Jump appeared. And so, in the time that I have been a member of Jump, what a wonderful opportunity I have had to talk about what Ray has just said, all of our congregations being together and crossing boundaries and crossing different areas of the city, and really taking a stance as a community about what's going on inside of our city. So, in three years, the Jump organization has been able to have conversations among our church communities to unearth concerns of those citizens that live in our church communities that, for one reason or another, don't have a voice or a seat at the table where actions can be taken to address life-sustaining issues. So, in many times, we've had people come to our conversations that we can talk and get to those issues, that they can't go out. They don't feel comfortable going to a government entity to have a sit-down talk. As a retired public school teacher, I have had firsthand knowledge and experiencing helping children be successful in the midst of circumstances of poverty, or not having access to services that support students outside of school, or not having families receive support when dealing with mental health issues, or not having a safe, affordable home with working utilities and free of pests. Those are all Jump issues that we've been working on the last three years. Our conversations and research since November have been aimed at identifying a best-practice solution to problematic issues of safe and affordable housing for people in low and very low-income brackets. One of the things that we're finding, that if people are in a bad housing situation, oftentimes, they can't afford to go to anything better. If they're going to go to a different housing place, it's going to have the same kinds of conditions. All the churches of Topeka, united, do not have the resources necessary to create the kind of solution to the housing issues we are discussing, and that has been the beauty of Jump, that this organization has come to the city of Topeka. It's involved citizens of Topeka, and we have found a way to bring stakeholders together to talk about these issues. But we need the help of the city. We need the help of a governing body that can have that power base to put teeth into what we're asking. I understand there's an activity that's going to conflict with our Nehemiah on the 26th, but I still ask you, if you can't attend, stay engaged with our discussions with Jump. Stay engaged with part of that solution. Stay engaged in trying to create that task force that will address the housing trust fund. So, thank you for all the work that you do. You have a... sometimes a not very thankful job, but I appreciate you. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and we have other... Mr. Joseph Ledbetter, but he is not here. So, that completes our public comments for this evening. We do have executive session, so if the city attorney would give us the parameters for the first session.
The motion would be that the governing body recess into executive session for a period of 15 minutes to consult with the city's legal counsel regarding potential litigation that requires privileged attorney-client communication. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: City Manager Jim Colson, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Chief of Litigation Shelley Starr, and myself.
And the elected officials. Councilwoman Ortiz moves, and Councilman Jensen seconds. All those discussion, all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
10 yes, please.
10 yes. We will go into executive session when the room is clear.